... He's really, he's very interesting. He has most, he has most contractors who are above four here. You know. I'm visiting. We're just gonna have to basically, this is on, you know, this is where we're going with the end. So. It's like getting a car by night or, or pop their firework and it's day and then it's daytime.
I like a problem.
They don't need it. Sometimes they just don't want you. They gave them that price, so they can connect. We are at the line, there's, there are sewer extensions.
So.
Water meter extensions, a little bit of something. We're not waiting for the deal like Supremes or do you use products? You know, you're getting enough products out of it. Well, couldn't, couldn't get the whole, whatever.
I did, I did, I worked that.
That way, we're gonna do.
I was trying to.
Well, it's built up something along.
Don't need to.
After.
There are we have.
It's still working. We put it on the.
Mark, and they're talking about. Congratulations. But we're not, I mean, I'm going to have to report on my. No.
I would, I would, I would, that stuff, there should be, that's something that's part of funding.
Yeah, okay, but I was wanting to make sure because we didn't, we weren't in game for fire department. In my state. You left.
I wish that would be my guess. If, if you know, if you know, I had any, that they were there that I made for order, which you've got anything out of. Department, which is fire department.
And we don't govern their.
I also know.
Hmm.
I'm saying I've been stuck. Uh, is there, I mean, I know, I know somebody is not me that is interested in in stocking some fish in there, but realize that uh we would have to go to D and R or something, I mean, you can't just dump fish in there. Is that something that is possible?
I would say anything is possible. We just need to get more specific strong than.
You just want to.
The right plan or who to put them to. That's good.
Right, and the other has to, exactly, he doesn't understand that, he just wants to put property on there, because I think, do they normally do stock that mix that way? Or is it a mix? It would really be a stir, make sure come back down, it was a mixture, okay.
Okay. Thank you, but we will.
Alright, thank you.
Any further business stuff, hearing and questions?
Most of the time just check that out.
All business and. Uh, the mainstream is in there now. So we do have a bar with internet. We set up maybe can't control from her. I had some or something for the front stats. We talked about looking at adding cameras to that, but we haven't put that up on agenda. Probably for the best.
Sorry, I can't.
Okay. And.
As far as the uh wifi access, how who are we going to bring that to? I just wanna know as far as when we did Harvard Market that month, that what would be available to be used to the public at that time, or?
I think it's got to be a public event.
Okay.
It's up running.
Okay.
Check if I know what she said, I think that's one.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Community Center. Let me see. Is anyone really moving on? Still waiting. So I mean, this is the nothing on Community Center at this point. Uh, does anybody have any questions about Community Center?
Um, I did get an email from Kayla and she would, she has two requests that she would wanted to put in front of the board this evening, and she would like permission to open the Community Center one day, a week during the day, um, for it to be a site for tutoring. For tutoring. Uh, that would be up to the teachers and the students to coordinate times that she was wanting to see if we would be willing to open it uh on one designated day of the week. My recommendation is we do it on Wednesday. Um, and so that it could be used for public use for tutoring right now.
I don't have a problem with that, we just put it on the agenda, so here's a public notice. Right, I think it's a follow up tonight. We still believe that people.
Why?
It is not a review. It's up to the chair. The one who thought they had something to do with it. And uh, the leaves are in that thing, so it'd be good for something. I don't, I don't see anything. Maybe with that, I think.
No, I didn't.
That anyone's gonna comply with all of that.
And if we can't, that's fine, because she just sent me the email three o'clock this afternoon, and I did tell her, I did not know if I would be able to present this or not.
I think I would prefer just to keep on the next agenda, but what I'll will actually add in. And uh, I don't see any problems with it.
It was great that way.
We just think, you know, that's why we're that, that's why we're trying to do this this way, to have the agenda. So if anybody in the public wants to say anything, they can discuss.
How many hours does she pay? This maybe two or three? She just said, yeah, open one day, one of these four.
We'll, we'll let's get that the next. Meeting we have now. Um. It's a few times, is this someone else again that Mary Ann?
They're not on the agenda, so don't worry.
Well, there's some, there's some with them, you know.
Yeah, well.
I, I think that mine's twisted.
That's how they were.
Okay. If you don't mind, I heard it.
I'll let her present at the next meeting anyway.
Then we'll move on to uh. I guess training plan, if you still don't have anything back.
He said he needs to draw.
Okay, so that's on, that's all. Park, Park Week Renewals, Chris is working on them. Do you wanna talk about anything on those groups or? Remember just like in the last meeting. What was that asset there? I thought they were okay, is there something about that?
Yeah, there was a couple of coworkers taking it for.
Oh, yeah. Or for those, yes.
And then that's a.
I'm just thinking.
You first, probably.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'll get to something tomorrow. We can figure out next time how to do a, I mean, if we have a whole place, you know, if we knew instead, we would prefer, sorry, simple renewal. She would resign instead of all that, you know what I mean?
We have, we go through the three years, so the four years, I mean, nine years.
Okay, for who did install wifi directly, who's still in Mohammed?
Um, I did hear back from him, and uh, that's the reason I requested a mainframe that also I can get in touch with them and see what the cost would be to increase the speed of the internet you have out there.
Okay.
So.
So that's the next table. We are still in progress.
Progress.
Progress, with some progress. New park area development. We want to discuss the rest. That we had presented. I guess since you all, I know I got an email from last, so I expect I'll get some more feedback from him. I put the specific things in there, which I found. So I'm really waiting on his response now, I think I gave you a quick one, I don't. Uh, Rachel, send you on.
Yeah.
I agree. Of course, it's my server.
Yeah.
And we guys don't want to do things together. When we do this, we probably need all of us to sign. Finally, it is in the meeting. I'm gonna try to get the teams, um, once I get all the feedback, I'll nail it down, maybe I can use the draft, some questions, and then get together. We'll rapidly moving into some later this year. Right. No, we gotta. And we gotta start making some decisions about that direction. Fucking, that's my heroes. Okay. Any update on airlines? Still be more coming.
Yeah, that's a progress, what you can hear.
Okay. Uh, code enforcement procedures. I understand we got that worked out somewhat? Yeah, of course, process goes, you know, so Mike sent me a spreadsheet, I don't know if he sent it to you all yet or not, I didn't get it back, but it's, we, we have a one that we put together, he's got one that tracking kind of shows uh, what, what, the list of what we've been receiving, but then he goes and checks, double checks it. The one that, the one that I think Rachel sent about the work for the media manager. That, that piece of that grass and above.
Yeah.
So he went, so when, when the, when the, huh?
Uh.
When, when uh, the complaint comes in, then he'll go, he'll go check it, and then there's a list of, he's showing which ones that he and I need to work on, because they're not just simple, you know, enforcement, but we're working through that. So yeah, so we'll be getting going, I did talk with a um commercial building inspecting company today, the representative, and we're supposed to get a meeting set up with the owner in the next few days to try, if we could talk about what services they provide as far as part of inspection services on commercial buildings. He's probably gonna be involved. I was, I was thinking of maybe to involve, and I call, that's the thing that I think is key on some of those, well, we're having a real different inspector to rely on, and hopefully we still have the lobbies, we've got no bros, and we want to start forward on that. In order, we're still on the, you know, this, I'm starting to need complaints from people that make complaints, yeah, but we're not doing that anymore. So, yeah, so there's only something kind of, I'd say, well, you know, there's some, it's, I mean, I, we have to get it. We have to have those, we have to have inspector, yeah, we rely on inspector, so. And it's not, there's not a ton of private apartment companies out there that are wanting to do municipal inspections with. We got it working on it, but I understand that urgency. Salary ordinance amendment, we get table there, when you first, if you want to build or something, Matt? Am I mistaken? No, you're right. Okay. You're right. You said it wrong, and right now I'm, we're, what's it? No, you're right, you're right.
I think I would like to clarify on that, though. Um, as it states on the agenda, the remove of the longevity pay and bonuses that actually, they were not removed, they were incorporated in to the individual salary. That kind of makes it look like we just took away their pay and bonuses, just reading it on the agenda.
Right.
And um, we did not do that, we actually incorporated it into their five weekly pay. Yep.
Yeah, you are, so remove, prove it subject to, we just have to make sure it's authorized and ordinance. So I apologize for that one, but it's. So, so any further um remarks that this, this per three A, instead of saying remove, want to go to pay bonuses, it should say incorporate it, right, into regular pay. And that is all.
Yes.
Correct. We should, we have not approved any salary raise as we got, as we got, right? Aren't we waiting? On a recommendation, or we ready to go with that? Yeah, we, we, we worked out the salary.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't, I don't think we were past it.
Yeah, we're gonna need to correct.
I know we talked about it for that first, that month, I know we were gonna do it, but I got help, it was not.
We get.
Good, congratulations. But the ranges in your current salary ordinance is a fine.
Wow.
We didn't need to change them, we just wanted to remove the authorization at the bottom that deals with the object of pay at seven six.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm minded to know. Yeah. Uh, updating on leave of laying. That was already been talked about. We put the proper, we're still waiting for that, I've seen. I'm gonna need to check with Mr. Werner again, see why. Update one twenty-one on the state road, it's Werner. Check the annual, down strategic plan, Aaron's working on that, assuming I had seen it, you have seen it, maybe right here, it's George. Okay, so I'll check with the right hand on that. Move the new business, uh, over on a resolution, twenty twenty-five dash one, which we read tonight. Anybody have any questions as it pertains to that resolution?
Nope.
No questions, anybody wants to move that forward?
I made the motion to remove the third resolution, uh, twenty twenty-five dash one, additional preparations in the amount of sixty-three thousand, sixty-six thousand eighty-six. I will second that.
Motion may be door scoring, say whatever. Uh, all papers say aye, aye. And if that passes. Now, the blast notification, it's informational, it's in your folders. I'm not going to read it, if someone wants to read it, they can pull from folder, if we got anybody in our audience that wants to read it, they can certainly come up here. I will share that with you.
Good.
By the way, don't have to stay for the meeting.
Well, this is the fact that seeing that, I understand this stuff, I think.
Yeah.
To that.
The home since.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm making.
Well, ever since Rachel.
Scary, dark.
Okay. Chris, do you have anything you want to report this due? Uh, so, yeah, the redistricting, the ordinance, I'll have to hear. Gotta do that like you want to. And I have it, the only thing I, I was looking at for math, I got, I think exactly. I got it off G I S. The town boundary in your qualification ordinance, um, is old, I think there's a couple of annexations that have happened since then. And so I'm gonna find those, but I, I don't have a bound description, I don't need a description, I don't think, I just. I don't know if we have a good boundary description of the town, um, that, that, right, or a good map that, you know, but I, I can describe the roads that are dividing lines, so. And, and we, we already reviewed it, yeah, made our recommendation to you, so you, I just give it all your orders, you know, whatever you want to do. Keep that on the map, there's a good description of the boundary, but I, I'm just gonna have to come up with something unless, you know, you wanna get somebody write one up of, you know, put on, take me to that right now, that's not a big one, man. But it needs to be done, but I think you already got an email.
I think I just sent it to you.
I know, like, you broke up the, sent an email to me, saying, we don't think you all did, and I know you did down there, so, um, we'll get that done, I'm in office. Do you think else? From the other end point? I'm really going over legislation updates, you guys probably see some things from me, but there's gonna be a few things. If you see anything you have a question about, or anything you've heard about, you'll have to look at it, I'll send you some bullet points, but they've changed uh, the executive session list of things that are allowed, they added some things, which I think would be really helpful. As you know, that does, it's pretty narrow, um, so, yeah. Okay, some interesting things. Okay, thank you, Chris. Lori, anything from corporate?
Um, yes, I have a note, or I got an email from, uh, about the lower grant, um, today, uh, lower should be ready, I hope we get that little ready, I think this week, two cents, um, grant. Um. And I, so she just took all money out of that.
Yeah, it's simple, so they'll send it to the ministry.
Yes.
And then the ministry hears that up and ready to receive the funds.
Correct. So just to clarify that, since this is on camera now, um, that grant money was, is actually money that was earmarked for trail lighting, probably three years ago, um, and we're finally in process of getting it transferred. So, um, that money does have to be specifically used for trail lighting. You know, the grant is one hundred thousand.
The grant, I think the grant was fifty, right?
The grant was fifty and then the.
The grant was fifty and the match is fifty.
Yes.
So all those, it's one hundred. Yeah. Come, I'm worried that you're over the last over.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. You have any next word? Uh. I have a question for you.
Okay.
You wanna, you wanna keep going, you ask one question. June seventh, the June sixteen term evaluation. If there's someone that can answer questions, if there's a court pressure, question comes up, who is, is that who's responsible?
Say word, no? Okay. Because I don't have a deputy, and I don't have any buddy that's in charge of it.
Okay. Uh, and I'm, I'm asking questions, I don't know. Would another court pressure from another town be able to answer a question if one comes up, or that you can really dock, answer a question?
It depends on the, the what, like, how do you tell the question, it's a general question, like, they look like a procedure wise or something like that, they could, like.
Know the why, put the statement, yeah?
Yes.
For, you're talking to our parents, you're just. Okay, just fine, okay, I just wanna make sure what the. You got any more to say?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay. Can you hear anyone else, can see the dates, upcoming training schedule?
Oh, yes, I'm glad for that. Um, I think you've already got the topics of the training scheduled for the end of the year, uh, if there's any training that you guys have that, uh, on that list. Just be sorry about that.
Well, you can do that. Doris, have you any specific divide you'd like to talk about?
Yeah, we will have also this separate page, such stuff, I'll look down, I'll be, I'm sorry.
Uh.
Later.
I think that, that doesn't, that doesn't have to be part of it, doesn't have to be part of. What you got, so? Uh, that.
All right, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll.
Yeah. I'd say make copy to that, you can just make sure we don't.
But I'm, I'm explaining that I, I, that's so educational, that sit there with a lot of, you know, like, sitting there, it was, it was, it's good. Even though you, you knew a lot of it, it was just like a reflection force, and those are, I really did appreciate it. Well, I thank you for signing that, because it was just good. Um, I'll, okay, I've just a few questions. Uh, the open the community center, did that help how we had machine down there? I think it, it didn't have a.
Back into the, back into the.
I discovered when I came in, and after you lifted it up one day, I felt like it was less, and the building was cut off, so.
I, I spent some more money, lost some more triggers. Uh, I'm paying, I'm paying, I'm paying more out of my pocket, paying charcoal, and I'll switch it up.
Well, Lori, would you wait for me to the earnest warrant? I mean, honestly, it really wouldn't be a bad idea to have that money.
Thick enough.
Think we should reference on that open change?
The, the price of those now for a commercial one are, are eight hundred bucks, or something like that. Uh, mine's not a commercial, I've got paid three hundred dollars for it. I would love the panel to use it, and everybody can do it. Now, I may not, I may not continue to buy filters and things for it, those are like fifty bucks each time, but you know, panels, you use it every place, you all can do it. Then, I, I wrote up some money.
Okay.
I was like, there's a little.
Uh, truck that parked, that was a justice car, just, you know, it's a, you know, so if it tires from driving, that's, that was all of ours and everything. Okay. It would get insurance on the utility vehicle that would be spot for the community center? True, yeah, okay, but the United place on? I'm sorry, do we need guys to play something? Yeah, they have to send us that part, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll get that written very quickly, okay? The baffles for this though?
I have nerve back, uh, next meeting with Jan, who stayed up, Moonville Library, I would bring that up and find out.
I appreciate that.
They should, I know it'll work. And I'm, I'm gonna assume, assume that they give them in, they're gonna want it installed, so they can get that. We gotta take, so.
Yeah, but yeah.
It should be, I would say it should be within the month.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, uh, just two things. I did call the two gentlemen, that was when we had the interviews of the park for others. I had an opportunity to call both of the men, uh, Ken and Lloyd, for sending the two people that are actually number two and number three on the interview list that I want, and they are both available. So I would like to know if I had put in a meeting from the board to go ahead and call them, or start one. I did text Brian, I apologized for messing in with the celebration for his birthday, and I called him, and both of you gentlemen were sent the paper placed on my list for calling, they're on call, they're both available, and, um, would like to know if they're actually come to you guys' time to say what it's.
If Brian has no problem with it, I have some problem, but if Brian is the supervisor, he needs to be the one contacting him in the paper, or, or yes, that doesn't mean.
Yeah.
Uh, so, according to Brian, if Brian is to go, can you allow Rachel to know? No, Brian, Brian is the supervisor, we don't have a really good, pretty, and a lot of, for that, in my mind, let's get hired.
Well, kind of, or somebody just wanna make sure, so. Okay, and then the other thing is, later, here, you know, call, we have next, and our locations will be, uh, the retirement, right, and you are, Mr. Werner, and you all have your uh, invites, hopefully you will all make it, but I like permission to also have, um, go out and I, welcome you to, uh, you know, do a little, a teaser for the train, and, uh, some tickets, and, you know, just a nice little celebration, Miss Werner, so that's okay with you guys?
You have any issues with that?
Not at all.
Yeah?
Okay.
Well, I, I will kind of step back off of it, let you two figure out how much money budget you want to spend on.
Oh, okay. I'm good, you know, I'm just standing on our edge, what happened, what happened?
Not a shit issue, but.
No, I think you all can do it. I might spend this, I would be a thought here on a, a, so, that's, that's all for now.
Thank you. Great.
Um. I would like permission to purchase the Maker's Market banner and four yard signs for the Maker's Market, and this different, uh, it'll be under two hundred dollars. I don't know if there's, and, yeah. We have sponsorship under the cover, but that's by sponsors, towards, um, for.
Okay. You request that, so this is the bill for, and you say we will talk about that. Any else? Uh, I was looking at, hey, older than, as a president, uh, I was looking at September twenty twenty-four minutes, and they're not in the book. We find this copy in the twenty twenty-four minutes, considered in the binder, will provide for the paper for that meeting. We won't do that done. Uh.
I'm sorry, September what?
September twenty twenty-four. For both, for all months, there's nothing in the binder. And, yeah, and I don't know, this is a great ask, can we answer issues potentially, you know, the private department on a party? Can we answer that question here, does anybody know anything, you want to find out?
No, I think the question is, correct, is the park department, um, utilized the building for a grant tuition party? And it was wondering, I, I was approached on having rent the park department for a party. And I was kind of like, I'm, I'm not sure.
So the bottom line is, can the fire department use the fire department building for a private party? Including rented out, they want to rent it out, hurting the English, and direct competition to the community center. If they're using it, private party or rental, should they have to have certificate of entrance? Do you?
At least some type of agreement, um, for liability.
Because town, town, the squad was really was faster, and you know, if they, if it was renting out a timer, it was, I know nothing about that, but seeing somebody in the front, I guess, give us, in the front, I, I, I. But if they had raised questions from the, everything, questions. Yes. Okay, other than that? Anybody want to address from the floor, Travis? Oh. Uh. Any questions you want to say? No? Next meet, next meeting is June third, twenty twenty-five. I am anxiously waiting someone for the, for the turn.
I may have to.
Rachel, Doris, most of the minutes, second meeting's over, six thirty-five. Thank you all.
Thank you. Six thousand, thank you, thank you. I was trying, three thousand, some information on the, the fish dog, you're not the first person that's asked that, I'll repeat, ask it just last year. And I find that information out, because I will.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
Do you have my email or? Uh, my, I have your phone number now, okay, so, um, yeah, what is your email?
Well, I don't watch them, I just.
Right, yeah.
Who's, uh, A, got a shaking? Oh, no, no, I.